I would like to call the Monday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening, whether you're here or watching at home. Tonight's agenda consists of actually skipping our minutes. Those will be from last meeting on May twenty-fourth. Those will be on the next meeting, June twenty-eighth's agenda. Uh, the second item is the conditional use permit for Evergy Blue Springs Service Center. Item three is site plan and design review for the Evergy Service Center. Item four is the preliminary plat for the Evergy Service Center. Item five is the final plat for the Evergy Service Center. Six is final plat for Woodlands at Chapman Farms, first plat. Seven is other business and eight is adjournment. We will hear items two, three, four, and five together and vote on them separately. I will open the public hearing for conditional use ki- uh, permit, CUP dash zero five dash two one dash seven 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 one for Evergy Blue Springs Service Center. And I'll ask for exhibits from our city attorney.
I offer the following exhibits into the record for conditional use permit, CUP zero five two one seven 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 one. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
At this time, I will ask for the UCF's presentation.
All right, thank you Vice Chair Hoes. Um, before this evening, our request for a canopy expansion to Evergy Service Station, um, which is located at eleven oh five Southeast Forty Highway, which is north of Southeast Forty Highway and east of Adams Ferry Parkway. Um, this property is zoned LI ADPO, which is light industrial, and it's part of the Adams Ferry Parkway overlay and consists of approximately thirteen point four seven acres. Um, the proposed, um, seven thousand four hundred thirty square foot, um, canopy addition will be located on the north side of the existing eighteen thousand square foot building. And it is, there's, this does require several approval processes related to that due to the expansion of the existing, um, site and use. Um, this includes the approval of a conditional use permit, which is required, um, for all light industrial zone properties in the Adams Ferry Parkway overlay. Uh, the existing and the proposed land use is a building or construction contractor, which may be permitted with a conditional use permit. Um, additionally, a site plan and design review is required to approve, uh, review and approve the proposed canopy addition. Um, this canopy addition, um, will be at the rear of the building and will be a metal canopy that complements the existing metal building. The canopy addition meets all the development standards included in the staff report, including setbacks, building coverage, and building height. Um, all vehicle requirements for the site have been met with existing parking on site. Um, based on the location of the site as well as the land use, neither bike parking nor pedestrian access is required for the site, um, given that the, uh, it is a, considered an industrial use, which only requires bicycle parking, um, based on the number of employees, uh, of which the site does not meet the minimum threshold for. And there is also no sidewalk, um, along Forty Highway or required for this site. Um, and therefore, no pedestrian access is warranted, um, due to that, um, due to that, um, process. As the request is for a canopy over an existing gravel parking lot, there is not, um, a reduction in green space for the site. Um, therefore, no additional landscaping is warranted. Um, any, uh, the existing landscaping and natural vegetation on site, um, meets all landscaping requirements for the site. The only code requirement that is associated with, um, the building, construction, contractor land use, um, in which the site does not meet, is, um, that anytime the property is, a storage area is within three hundred feet of a less intensive zoning district, um, they are required to put up a six to eight foot privacy fence. Um, in this case, the storage yard is, um, approximately in that location. And the nor- the property to the north is zoned, um, RE Residential State, which is part of the Adams Point Golf Course. Um, the closest point of that property line from the storage area is approximately a hundred and fifty-seven feet, um, which is less than the three hundred foot requirement. However, there is significant natural vegetation already, as well as topography that helps to screen the storage area from the golf course property. And therefore, the applicant, um, an alternative development standard has been requested to, uh, waive that, um, privacy fence requirement as there would, the privacy fence will not have any impact, um, on the screening of the storage room offsite. Um, the appearance review did review, um, the site plan and design review request at their June fourth meeting and recommends approval of the site plan and design review, um, for the expansion. Um, prior to building permit approval, the site must also be platted. Um, on the screen is the preliminary plat and then a final plat has also been provided. Um, we did receive a revised final plat today from the applicant. Um, none of it changes any of the, um, easement dedication or the property boundaries that are shown here to, um, this evening. Um, just some minor, um, measurements that were related to a monument location that it was tied to. So that, uh, revised final plat will be provided to the city council, um, for their meeting next week. As part of this planning process, easements are being dedicated, particularly a drainage easement along the west property line, where there's a natural drainage area and stream buffer, as well as the north half of the ri- or south half of the right-of-way for Northeast Walnut Street, um, on the north property line, that will provide, um, potential future expand- extension of Walnut Street, um, east of Adams Ferry Parkway. The only easement that is not being dedicated with this plat is an electric easement. As you can see, there is overhead power line, um, that goes, um, generally from the southwest to the northeast across the property. Um, however, um, there is case law in Missouri that does limit, uh, utility from granting easements to themselves. Um, to avoid this potential, um, conflict, a condition of approval has been added to both the preliminary and the final plat that requires the electric utility company to dedicate an easement in the future if or when they sell or transfer this property. Um, staff reviewed the applications and find that all review criteria has been met and allows improvements to be made to an existing site and land use. Um, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. Approval of the site plan and design review with two conditions. Approval of the preliminary plat with three conditions and approval of the final plat with three conditions. And I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Nope. Would the applicant like to speak? If, um, you'll have to swear in.
Okay. Ready for him, please. Do you sound as where the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, somebody else?
Yes.
Need your name and address?
My name is Chris Crowder. My address is one five zero two Birch Drive in Greenwood, Missouri, six four zero three four. Uh, thank you all. I just wanted to say, um, hello and, uh, wanted to give the staff a shout out and say that they were really great to work with on this project, that they were, um, answered all questions thoroughly and worked with us to, to work out any idiosync- idiosyncrasies on the project and to keep it moving forward. And I just wanted to say that before you and answer any questions you guys might have that are technically related. I also have Jay Wilson here from Evergy, if you had any specific questions about Evergy themselves.
Any other question? No, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone opposed? Any further discussion from the commissions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will now ask for a motion for CUP zero five two one seven seven one with, was it three? Where'd that go?
Um, two conditions.
Two conditions. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups.
I would move for approval of CUP zero five two one seven 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 one with the two staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I don't know who went first. I'm gonna take Karen's word and say Byron was first. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Hoes?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
The motion carried, thank you. This item will be recommended to be heard by city council on Monday, June twenty-first at six P M. Do we have a motion for the site plan, S P D R zero five two one seven seven two with two staff conditions?
That one had three, didn't it?
Uh, that one has two as well.
Two.
It was the other one.
Yeah, the preliminary and final have three.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, yes. Commissioner Rohr?
I move for approval of the site plan and design review, zero five two one seven 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 two with the two staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Honeycutt. Is this also in favor?
Uh, no, it's just all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any who oppose? Hearing none, also passes unanimously. All right, now for the preliminary plat. P P zero five two one seven 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 three with three staff conditions. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Billups?
Uh, I will move for approval of the preliminary plat, zero five two one seven 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 three with the three staff conditions.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Again from Honeycutt. Um, let's see, is this, uh, all who in favor? All in favor, say aye.
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 All who oppose? None? Motion carried unanimously. And for the final plat, P F zero five two one seven seven four?
Shall I go for the hat trick?
Why not?
With the three staff conditions, yes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the final plat, zero five two one seven 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 four for Evergy Service Center with the three staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, Honeycutt again. Is this also just same thing, no roll calls? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose? This item will be recommended and heard by the city council also on June twenty-first at six P M. Next, we have item six, final plat for Woodlands at Chapman Farms. I will ask the staff for comments.
All right, yes, thank you Vice Chair Hoes. Um, before the commission this evening, pull it up here, um, is the final plat for the Woodlands at Chapman Farms, first plat. Uh, the property is located south of Southwest Wyatt Road and east of Seven Highway by approximately seven hundred feet. Uh, this plat does cover twelve point six nine acres and includes thirty-nine single-family lots and four common open space tracks. And the property is zoned SF seven, single-family. Uh, the final plat again does include, um, thirty-nine single-family lots. Um, the property, based on the zoning and the, uh, lot sizes that have been provided, um, allows all lots to be classified as a detached house neighborhood lot, uh, which is the standard building type for the SF seven zoning district. Um, conditions of approval from the preliminary plat, uh, were included. Um, in the staff report for reference, the preliminary plat was approved in twenty sixteen. Um, all conditions have been met or will be met in future development phases. The one item that has, uh, will need to be accommodated in a future phase is related to a condition from twenty sixteen that did require that once the traffic study was completed, if there were any, any changes in right-of-way, um, that that be, uh, require an amended preliminary plat, uh, for that phase. Um, there is a future phase in which southwest Sixth Street, um, is now being upgraded to a minor collector street, uh, which is located further to the west of this property. Um, if I go back to the zoning, zoning district map, uh, that pretty much follows the boundary line here between the commercial and multifamily zoning and the single-family to create, um, somewhat of kind of an outer, outer road there, um, that separates the, uh, higher density development along the Seven Highway cord, or along the Seven Highway frontage and the less dense single-family. Um, so, uh, prior to that street being platted, that would warrant an amended, um, preliminary plat, um, at some point in the future. The total preliminary plat, um, included three hundred and thirty-two single-family lots and four lots, uh, two commercial on both ends of the property and then two tracks for multifamily in the middle. Um, no development plans have been brought forward on eat- on any of those, um, um, multifamily or commercial properties. Um, the minimum livable floor area for the subdivision is fourteen hundred square feet and has been noted on the final plat. Um, all landscaping and sidewalk improvements adjacent to each lot are required to be completed with the development of each lot and prior to occupancy. And with that, staff recommends approval of the final plat with four conditions and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to speak? You have to be sworn in. Oh. Enough for this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
Okay, uh, my name is Bob Frost. I'm the applicant. I'm the owner of my wife and I have the property. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, offer any, uh, comments or if you have any questions about anything, I'd be trying to answer them if I can.
Any questions? Looks like we don't have any, thank you.
Great, I'm gone then.
Any further discussion? Nope. Well then, I will ask for a motion on the final plat for Woodlands at Chapman Farms, P F zero five two one seven seven six five.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat, P F dash zero five dash two one dash seven seven six five, the Woodlands at Chapman Farms, first plat with the four staff conditions.
Thank you for remembering the conditions, 'cause I forgot them. Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Honeycutt. And... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? Nope. This item will be heard by the city council on Monday, June twenty-first at six P M. Uh, we do have a meeting on June twenty-eighth. And, uh, at this time, I would ask for staff to talk about the monthly community development report.
Yes, we, um, did include our new monthly activity, uh, report in the packet. Um, this encompasses all of the divisions in community development except for business services. Uh, but it does include all of the, um, building activity that went on through the month as well as codes activity. Um, so our building permit for May, we issued twenty-seven new single-family home permits and seven new duplex permits, so a total of forty-one dwelling units. Um, year over year, we continue to increase over twenty twenty, um, year to date. Um, over a hundred and twenty-nine dwelling units issued so far in twenty twenty-one compared to ninety-four, um, last year. And building permit-wise, we are also up, uh, pretty significantly up by over a hundred and forty permits year over year. And last year was a record year, so we are on, on pace for another record year, it looks like, on the building permit side. Um, we've also added some additional comparisons for total square footage that is, that has been added as well as construction cost. Um, you can see year over year on our construction costs, we are doubled, over double what we, um, issued, approved in twenty twenty. A lot of that is due to some recent industrial development, including the Amazon, um, facility as well as the logistics center, um, off of Tire Road in Jefferson Street. Um, and our building inspections also mirror the growth in building permits. Uh, with more building permits, we're, um, experiencing more inspections for those. Um, we've included our code information as well. It may be of interest. We had a total of a hundred and ninety-seven cases open last month. Um, and of those, the, the top code cases, sixty-seven were related to citizen nuisance complaints and sixty-two high weeds and grass and then trash wa- uh, twenty-one cases opened on those. And then the last page, um, the, the first part is something that you're very well aware of. We thought it would be nice to just include for those who aren't on the planning commission, um, as well as the planning commission to just have a, uh, be able to see what went to council and what didn't and how it, uh, uh, how the project fared at council. Um, just a recap of what planning projects went through, planning commission and or council, um, during the past month. And then signed permit activity, um, year over year, we are up, um, just slightly, uh, fifty-four permits. Uh, we only issued six permits in May compared to nineteen in, in twenty twenty. Um, but we're still, um, about where we should be for the year to date on those. Any questions on the development report?
Yep.
Commissioner Rohr? I have a couple of, sorry. Oops. First on the, um, on that report, thanks for putting that together on like, you know, the case for the, um, what's been approved. Can we also add like when the beginning of construction might start, some of those? To the best of our, your knowledge?
Yeah, that, that can be difficult to, for staff to determine, um, because it, ultimately that is up to the developer and the applicant. So even if we issue a permit, we don't know exactly when their start date will be, um...
'Cause some of these were like, one of them was supposed to start even before the first of the year when he was in here told us that. So that's, you know, we're, we're in the June or any, I'm just curious, you know, is, is there a chance that some of those projects may never start?
Yes, um, Waterburgers should be starting very, very shortly, um, and some of the other projects like Adams Point Village that is under construction in terms of the, um, the infrastructure for that additional phase. Uh, I think we brought, uh, we brought some project updates to the last planning commission on where some of the larger, um, projects are in the process. Um, so that's certainly something that we can keep the planning commission updated on, on where some of those, um, projects of interest are in the process.
And then the second questions are on the code cases. Explain to me how there's the high weeds. We've, we have, we have too many weeds, high weeds above eight inches, above twelve inches in the city of the Springs. How is that controlled? I mean, I re- I read the information, you know, how you get fined and stuff like that, but how well is that carried through? Because it's, there's a lot of properties right now with weeds above eight inches.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer that. We do have quite a bit of property right now with high weeds and grass due to the, um, uh, significant amount of rain we had over the last month to six weeks. And so, um, how that typically works is, um, our code enforcement is complaint-based. And so if a, a complaint is received either, uh, through our codes hotline or they can actually be, they can be submitted online as well, uh, then, uh, a codes inspector goes out and s- looks at the property and looks at the properties around it as well and then will issue, um, a, a violation notice to the property owner and to have it, uh, basically maintained, cut, if you will. And then if they don't follow through with that, then, or if it's not done, um, within a certain amount of time, uh, then they get in a, a ticket.
Right.
Another amount of time follows through, then if they still don't, uh, follow, uh, you know, cut the grass after that time, then they get a notice to appear in court and that gets scheduled out quite a bit. Uh, I do know that our court dates were scheduled, uh, out quite a ways in terms of months during the COVID pandemic. Uh, and so, um, make a long story short, it can take quite a long time if a property owner is unwilling to cooperate once they get that notice. Um, uh, so we do have quite a bit of high weeds and grass throughout the city. I was driving through some parts of town today, some active construction sites where the lots are for sale and they just haven't started construction. High weeds and grass throughout there, properties just, you know, um, not being maintained. And so, uh, summer, spring, our high weeds and grass complaints get really high as well. Um, and also, uh, over the past six weeks, uh, we, we are down to one full-time code inspector and one part-time code inspector. We had a staff member leave and we've been recruiting that position. So, uh, our ability to respond to those violations, uh, complaints has been almost cut in half, uh, too many dep- uh, to a degree. But we have, uh, tentatively hired somebody. Tentatively, you know, they have to go through the process and, and hopefully have them start here, uh, yet before the end of the month, uh, so that we can, uh, you know, get back up to, uh, full staff and our code, uh, inspectors.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Commissioner?
I did have a question. I hope I can remember what one of them was. On the trash, since we're down here on, on codes, what is that? What are you, because they leave their trash cans on the curb side or what?
Usually, usually that is just when somebody has left. It's, it's not the trash on the curb. It's more they have a pile of trash, um, in their yard or they've left bags of trash somewhere on their property. Um, so it's, that's separate from the other issue of leaving the, the bins on the street.
Is there any place that gives people that move here from out of town any information that they're not supposed to put their trash cans on the curb for trash day? Because they're all doing it.
It is, uh...
And that nothing happens with it?
Yeah, we do have, um, it is in our, in all of our publications, um, it's on our website.
There's a new resident guide that is on our website.
And I think occasionally when we have the magazine, there's usually some code tips on there and I think that that has been there.
But they have to read it.
Yeah, well, and to be honest, one of our, our biggest problems too is that we have some subdivisions which the HOA requires that it be done because the trash hauler is telling the HOA that it has to be done. And so all of these residents are doing it in violation of the city code because their trash hauler is telling them it needs to be done. The trash hauler is telling the HOA, the HOA is telling all these people that they need to do it. And so, um, that is one of our biggest, um, flashpoints when it comes to, uh, code complaints and neighborhood complaints. Uh, some people in the city love the idea that you have to put it, that you can't put it down at the curb, uh, on trash day and the other half of the city hates it. So, um, it's a very, and then there's also the other side of that rule is the trash company does not have to return it back to within five feet of your house. They can leave it at, uh, the curb when they're done. And so it is confusing to residents when they think, well, I don't have to take it down to the curb but then I have to bring it back up. And so, um, yeah, Matt probably gets at least one or two of those calls a week, so...
I do remember what it was. What I was gonna ask. The hotel, you were asking about some projects that we don't know when they're gonna start. Well, we also approved the hotel or the apartment complex next to Price Chopper North. I haven't seen any activity on there.
That, uh, there, we are finishing their building permit review on that. There was just a couple of minor things that we're waiting on. Um, but that should hopefully begin construction soon. Uh, we also received the Edison Apartments. We've received their permit pl- package as well, which is the apartment complex north of Saint Mary's. So we, uh, have two apartment complex, uh, apartment buildings that should hopefully be under construction soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? Any other business? Yes, Commissioner Kradoff?
Madam Chair, at the last planning meeting, Director of Community Development mentioned at the, in reference to the unfounded, unfunded capital needs project number P S dash eleven dash twenty-one, referencing the armored vehicle that was added to be part of the five-year program. It was just a presentation. Uh, the director also mentioned, uh, you could comment at the public hearing on June seventh at the city council meeting by... by representing yourself as a citizen, but not as a collective body. The city attorney also mentioned at the planning commission meeting that you could send an email or appear at the June seventh meeting and, and comment. So, at the June seventh council meeting, the mayor, pro temp, council member Edmison, allowed one speaker who was opposed to it to talk, and stated that the speaker was the only one to submit a speaker appearance form. So my question is, I guess to the pro temp, why on that particular day is only one person allowed to speak when the other meetings, other people who are opposed to adherence are allowed to speak without submitting a form? You know, we've had city council meetings and planning commission meetings, other people have been able to make presentations, you know, in opposition. I was just curious.
Do you?
Why that wouldn't allow?
I, I just.
'Cause there were people that, out there that wanted to speak.
Unfortunately, since they didn't have that council information speaker form, he closed the hearing before you had a chance to speak, so we're sorry that that happened. I understand that you.
Yeah, a couple people asked me about that, so I was just, just curious.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
So, before we close that, are you required to have that form, just, just for, for the record? Because there's, there's occasions that we don't have that form. So do you need that at every, every council meeting?
Well, we do highly recommend it. It helps to prepare for the meeting, but it's not absolutely required.
Okay.
So that was, I mean, I, we apologize again for that happening to you. Understand it was frustrating.
It wasn't so much me, but there were some other people that wanted to speak out on the matter, but, but thank you for, for answering that.
Thank you. Is there any other business?
We have cork and canvas this weekend.
Yep.
What time does that start? Eleven? Is that correct?
Eleven to seven, I believe.
Eleven to seven, downtown Blue Springs.
Which day?
Saturday, this Saturday, cork and canvas.
All right.
Yeah, is it getting very normal?
Yes.
Nothing says normal than walking around getting wine.
Right.
Always a good time. Buying art, hopefully buying art.
Yes, beautiful art, yeah.
Well, if there's no other business, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? No. The meeting is adjourned? I clicked that right?
Yep.
Whenever a place and people have walked in, they bring any stuff.